Mayor Protim Michael Mesmar to lead us in an indication.
Dear God, please have mercy on the sick, the suffering, the prisoners, those held captive, those traveling whether by land, air, or sea. The COVID patients, please bless the doctors, the medical researchers, the nurses, the hospital staff, the medical staff that is working with this virus to make us all healthier. And I ask you to have, Lord, have mercy in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit on there.
Amen. Thank you. This time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I'd like to welcome everybody to our City Commission meeting. Been duly posted, regularly scheduled meeting of the City Commission. And thank you for joining by Zoom or being online, watching the meeting on our city's website. Thanks, everybody, for continuing to follow the protocols that we need to follow to get through our COVID-19 emergency. And we announced late this afternoon that due to the severe weather that we have been having and the fact that so many people have been out without power in their homes for 48 hours or more, we have opened the community center Casa del Sol complex as a warming center effective 5:00 PM this afternoon. You can bring your things that you need to charge up, and there'll be resources there for you. Obviously, we want everyone to be safe there, so we'll be asking for temperature checks, for social distancing, and for you to wear a mask. So bring a mask. But we do want our folks that are cold, because it's cold out there, and many of our houses have been without power for a long time. We encourage you to get the word out to those who you think need to warm up and to come down there to that location on Madison Street and get them warm. So our heart goes out to everyone who's suffering through this additional disaster, this emergency that we're experiencing here throughout Texas and in our city. This time, I'll formally call the meeting to order and ask for citizen communication.
Mayor, we have two persons that want to speak. And Kristian Senka on the food truck park, and he wants to be called. And Ron Losano on the same subject and wants to be called.
Very well, we'll call them at the time of the item, that the item was called, on item four. And so now we'll go to item one, which is the presentation of a proclamation proclaiming the month of February 2021 is Black History Month, and we have a number of folks joining us tonight to receive this proclamation on behalf of the community. We want to welcome Mr. Lonnie Davis and Jerry Florye, Sandra Tovar. There are others that will be watching, streaming on YouTube. Melody Morris, Rosaline Mason, Benny Newby, Betty Emerson, Tana Colley, Diana Putz, Marion Rice, and Rose Flowers. Thank you all for participating tonight in this. This is a great opportunity for us to recognize Black History Month. And so this is our proclamation, which we'll present, wish we could be presenting it in person to you all and having you all up in our chamber as we normally do. Nevertheless, it's important that we recognize Black History Month, whereas African-American history is a very large part of American history. And since 1976, the month of February has been designated as a month for which memorable events should be recognized and celebrated. And whereas Black History Month affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our country, and whereas African-American Month provides a chance to pay tribute to the accomplishments of the people of African-American descent who contribute to social, cultural, economic, and political life of our city, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, whereas this month is a time to showcase, share, and celebrate the significant role of our African-American community, which plays into Harlingen's success, growth, and prosperity. Now, therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, and on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in Harlingen, Texas, and call upon all citizens to observe and commemorate African-American History Month for their many contributions to our communities. So we have so much pride in that community, and we appreciate everything that they have done to move our city forward in so many different ways. So if any of you would like to say anything, we welcome you, Lonnie, or Jerry, or Linda, to Sandra rather, to say something.
Mr. Mayor?
We can hear you.
Thank you for the Black community. We're becoming old friends of doing this, and you don't know how much we appreciate it. I'm here today because we're doing another little project that I think the City of Harlingen should know about with Black students in the Harlingen Independent School District. My wife and I have bought books for all the students in Harlingen High School, and Harlingen Middle School, and the elementary school that has to do with Black history, because when I went to school in Harlingen, Texas, there were very few books in the library that we could actually go to and find out about Black history. So we took it upon ourselves this year with the help of my old friend Jerry Florye and Ms. Tovar, who I haven't met yet, to distribute these books and take a picture. And we would like the City of Harlingen to help us get this recognized by helping us get it in the Valley Morning Star and other places of advertisement that we could let everyone know what's happening in Harlingen, Texas. And thank you, Mayor, for keeping it going. I told you this, what has it been? It's five or six years ago that we started this, and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jerry.
Yes. It's certainly a privilege to be with all of you tonight. I thank you so much for this opportunity to highlight the very, very important work that Lonnie and Deloria Davis are doing on behalf of the Harlingen School District for our students, and also highlight the significant role, as your proclamation says, that our fellow citizens who have made, you know, in the development over the years of Harlingen. Lonnie and Deloria are making a significant investment in our children, not just monetarily, but I've had the opportunity to see the list of books that they have chosen to give to our children, who will then be allowed to either keep them or to place them in our school libraries. And it is such, and it is such an important list of people who have been influential in the history of this country. You know, I'm just honored even to hear about the books that these students are going to have the opportunity to read. And I would like on a personal note to say that all of us in Harlingen have respected Lonnie Davis for a very long time as a businessman and his father before him. But Randy, my husband, and I have the privilege of having known Lonnie as a graduate of that fabulous class of 1961 in Harlingen High School, where I would like to be certain that all of you know, Lonnie integrated the Harlingen Cardinal Football Team. So our class of 61 has honored this gentleman for a very long time. But right now, we want to say thank you, and I, as a, you know, as a board member and as a citizen for four or five generations in Harlingen in our family, want to say thank you to all of our fellow Americans who have fought the good fight, who have struggled, as our Black American friends have struggled, and those who have helped on, you know, on all occasions to bring us together as a community. And I thank you, Mayor Boswell, because that's what's happening right now. We're continuing to bring us together as a community. Harlingen, at its best, is all about partnerships. And so thank you for being our partners always in the district. Thank you for helping us honor Lonnie, and thank you for helping us bring attention to this important opportunity for our children to read these fabulous books. I would like to read them all. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you.
Mayor Boswell?
Yes.
I'm Sandra Tovar, and I am currently the Director of Guidance and Counseling for Harlingen CISD. And I have not met in person Mr. Davis, but I would like to thank him and his wife on behalf of our students that are going to benefit from the books that they will be receiving. As Mrs. Florye did mention, the list is extensive and extremely well, that I even commented to Mr. Davis that I will be sharing that list with our head librarian to see if we can get those books into all of our libraries. But for this particular project, what we will be doing is, once we do receive the books, then we will be contacting our parents and getting the books to our students. As you all may know, we have three different modes of education currently in HCISD. We have students that are face-to-face. We have students that are completely virtual. And then we have students that are a hybrid, that are, they are face-to-face two days, and then they're virtual the rest of the days. So getting the books to the students is gonna, you know, it will happen. And then, of course, the goal is to have the parents approve to allow the students to go ahead and send us a picture of them with the books. And then, yes, of course, we want to, you know, share this and let the parents, you know, decide if they will allow us to share this with Valley Morning Star and get, hopefully we get a really great article about the work that Mr. Davis and his wife are doing for our community, and then as well as the giving back. And I know that Mr. Davis is a very humble man, and he told me, no, it's not about, you know, us giving the books, but as part of HCISD, we have a lot of partnerships, and this is an extremely good partnership that I hope that we're able to continue and able to do from here on out. So, Mr. Davis, I hope that your wife is around there somewhere. Thank you so much on the behalf of our HCISD students, and thank you for what you are doing for our community. We, part of HCISD, appreciate that greatly. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to have a few minutes to speak.
All right, well, thank all of you for participating tonight. It makes it, it's hard to, hard to make a Zoom presentation all that special, but your presence here tonight did make it special. And I just want to congratulate Lonnie and Deloria on this latest project that they've taken the leadership role in. Lonnie is a fantastic businessman and community leader, and Deloria is an amazing mathematician and fantastic educator. And so we are so grateful to what you're doing now on this project, and it just fits so well with this proclamation. So thank you all so much for what you've always done and for what you continue to do. All right, we'll move on then to the next proclamation, which is, I'm sorry, but I have to say, not quite as, for me, exciting, and that is February 21st through 27th, 2021 is Engineers Week. Proclamation for Engineers Week. Now, I know it might get some flack from engineers for saying what I just said, but they play an important role in advancing our community as well, and we do want to honor them with this proclamation. Whereas engineers have used their specific, their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs and to enhance the quality of life of the citizens of the City of Harlingen. Whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time for rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to providing planning, design, and oversight for the various projects located within the City of Harlingen. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future, and therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, and on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission, hereby proclaim February 21st through the 27th, 2021, as Engineers Week in the City of Harlingen. I call upon all citizens to recognize the contributions that our city engineers do towards the development and growth of our community. And while I tried to interject a little bit of humor there, which is hard to do on Zoom, I found not quite as easy as you could do it in person, but we do recognize the value of our engineers, and we have some very, some very prominent engineers who have joined us tonight, I believe, to celebrate and to receive this proclamation. Lomberto Babi Bayi, professional engineer, the Vice Chair of the Texas Board of Professional Engineers and Land State Surveyors. Rolando Rubiano, professional engineer, Secretary of the Texas Board of Professional Engineers and Surveyors. And Isidoro Arcona, President of the Rio Grande Valley Chapter of the Texas Society of Professional Engineers. Welcome you all to, if you're here to make some comments or response to this. Obviously, we are living in a moment now, in a time, especially this week, where we recognize how important engineering is to maintaining our society and keeping our society bound together and moving forward. And so I'll call upon whoever wants to speak.
Honorable Mayor Boswell and City Commissioners, good afternoon. I would like to say a few words. Founded by the National Society of Professional Engineers in 1951, Engineers Week is dedicated to recognize the remarkable men and women of this profession. Engineers Week is a time to celebrate how engineers make a difference in our world, increase the public dialogue about the need for engineers, and also to bring engineers to life for kids, educators, and parents. This is more than a week-long event. It signifies a year-round commitment to making a difference, to commend engineers and the engineering profession for making our lives better in every conceivable way. On behalf of the Rio Grande Valley Chapter of the Texas Society of Professional Engineers and for every engineer in our region, I want to express a sincere appreciation for this proclamation. Thank you, and God bless you.
Sure, Arcona, thank you very much. Is Mr. Bayi or Mr. Rubiano on the line with us or on the Zoom call? Well, they, Mr. Rubiano is current Chairman of our Airport Board and has given outstanding service to our community in that capacity and in many other ways as a volunteer. So not only do engineers do valuable and important work on the infrastructure needed to maintain our community and to move our community forward, but they do volunteer work in our community as well. And, Sir Arcona, we want to thank you for joining us this evening and for receiving this proclamation. We'll get it to you, and hopefully you all will have a place to display it. All right? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. Items 3, A through E is our motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Some of them, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item four is the consideration of possible action to approve and adopt an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances by adding various provisions covering the location, use, existence, and operations of food truck parks as follows. Chapter 111 zoning Article 3, Section 111-62, Use Chart, establishing a category in the Use Chart, Article 6, Section 111-140B, adding off-street parking requirements, Article 12, Section 111-135, Special Use Regulations and Restrictions, establishing other regulations, and Article 15, Section 111-413, Special Use Permit Progress, requiring a Special Use Permit, application to the City of Harlingen. And I would like, at this time, to call, ask, go ahead and ask City Secretary to contact Mr. Senka, Mr. Losano, who signed up to speak on this topic.
Mayor, do we need to take it off the table first?
Yeah, I believe so, Mayor. I think it was tabled at the last meeting, so I believe it needs to be taken off the table.
So I make the motion that we remove it from the table.
Oh, second.
All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
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 Gary's Adam is removed from the table and back on the agenda. And so I will ask at this time our City Secretary to contact Mr. Senka and Mr. Losano for their comments.
Okay.
This is Kristian Senka.
Mr. Senka, this is Amanda Lisonlo, City Secretary for the City of Harlingen. You asked to speak on item number four, food truck park. You have two minutes, and I will tell you when to start. You may start now.
Well, I guess I was just really calling in. I had actually put in the form before I realized that you guys had actually already changed the ruling on the food truck parks to be a little bit more lenient, to fit towards the restaurants and fit in mind with the restaurants as far as the security goes, and that was my main concern. So hats off to the City of Harlingen and our Commissioners. Thank you, guys, for giving us a food truck park ordinance that is friendly to small businesses and something that we can work with. So I guess I'm just saying thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Senka.
Well, Chris, have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Senka.
I will proceed with Mr. Losano, Mayor. One moment, please.
Good afternoon.
Ron, this is Amanda Ron, and you asked to speak on item number four, food truck park under Public Commons. You have two minutes, Ron. You may start now.
Hello?
You may start now.
All right, thank you. Last go-round, at the inception of three months of sustained victory, Al, homespun nuggets, he attempted to set the stage for his version of 1,000 feet. However, Texans just conjure three and a third football fields to get a field for that distance, which is equivalent to the McDonald's at 77 and Morgan heading to Tyler. It also could encompass downtown in its entirety. That's why I have yet to set him to run this proposal, those areas which included downtown and the three east of the Loop sites, which are incredulous. He had to assume no one resides in the Reese, probably a good assumption, nor in Harlingen install this building, because if they don't complain there, no one else in their proximity will either. Mr. Senka has already covered reasonable ground bases, such as he just stated, and he spoke about abatement technologies at the last meeting that curb nuisance concerns. But this clever ordinance, like stacks, no compete clauses, confront our free enterprise theories head-on. This is another misguided effort to suppress competition in violation of the Texas Constitution dictates. A thousand is meant to mean. The city has concerts by this definition in the city park with similar provisions. It's different rules for different folks in Harlingen tradition. The next item is going to be a bar in our Heavies Street, and yet they require no parking because it's tradition. So seemingly, even those who want to surface and encourage competition have come around to Harlingen to mission monopoly as a good thing for the stew.
Your time is up, Mr. Losano.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you. And now fast motor restaurants.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We have no more citizens, Mayor.
All right, and that's all for citizen communication. Everybody signed up for this item. So I'll ask the staff to go ahead and proceed with the revisions that have been made at the direction of the City Commission.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and take the lead on this. After the last meeting, I sat down with staff, and I went through some changes that I think would comply with what the City Council, to address the City Council's concerns. Before I get into that, I do want to point out that a restaurant that sells complimentary alcohol beverages, but the total gross sales receipts are more than 50% from the sale of food, that is considered a restaurant. I just want to make sure that we understand that that's the definition of a restaurant. That differs from a bar, which generates 51% or more of the gross sales receipts from the sale of alcohol. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So what I asked staff to do, and the revisions that we've made to the ordinance, is that it would require the food truck park to apply for a specific use permit. That's very important. And the specific use permit would require the applicant to submit a site plan for the entire food truck park, the entire park, the entire site. And the application must specify the maximum capacity for the total park. That's important, because the SUP would establish the maximum capacity for that park based on the size and the parking spaces and other things that are being triggered. Now, once we get the maximum capacity of the park, that would trigger the number of parking spaces that will be required for the park, and the number of men's and women's restrooms that will be required in accordance to ordinance, much like we do with a restaurant. It would not require a licensed security officer as long as 50%, 50% or more of the sales are from food, just similar to a restaurant. And so if at any time they exceed their capacity, they would be in violation of the SUP, and that would come back to the City Commission for consideration revocation. Next slide, please. Staff would review the entire site plan for compliance with the parking and restroom requirements, and also we would notify the surrounding property owners within 1,000 feet. We no longer have the 1,000-foot distance requirement for residential areas. We do have the 1,000-foot notification requirement. After 12 months of operation, we would require a full-blown audit of all gross sales, and the importance of that is that the gross sales from the food truck park and any alcohol sales would tell us if they're exceeding the 51% mark. If they are exceeding the 51% mark for alcohol sales, then that, we would have to treat them as a bar, they would have to apply for a new SUP, come back to the City Commission for consideration of that SUP as a bar, and that would trigger security officers. And that would be considered by the City Commission and approved by the City Commission as to the number of officers that would be required. Next slide, please. So basically, you have a food truck park with a maximum capacity of 280 people based on 80, that would require 80 parking spaces. This is just kind of an outline, an example of a food truck park. And so all of these things will play together. All of these things are already in place for our And so all these things will play together. All of these things are already in place for our restaurants. They're already in place for our bars. So the concert provisions that we had in the past, that doesn't come into play anymore. Because what you have now is you have a maximum capacity for the park that cannot be exceeded. If it exceeded, again, they are in violation of the SUP. So one of these things, all of these things will take care of each other as long as they work in unison. Next slide, please. If I'm going too fast, please stop me. So staff recommends that we require an SUP for food truck parks, that we require notification of all property owners within a thousand feet of the subject property. We allow food truck parks to properly zone in GR and low, light industry areas. Then we treat food truck parks as restaurants and not require a licensed security officer as long as fifty percent or more of the total sales are food-related. Again, if they hit that fifty-one percent mark, then they would, in accordance, as a result of an audit, then that would trigger a different SUP and they would be treated as a bar. Require review of the SUP every twelve months. And then require the applicant to submit certified audits detailing total sales receipts to verify compliance with more than fifty percent of food being sold. And the applicant would be required to hire a licensed security officer if sale of alcohol beverages is more than fifty-one percent of total gross sales receipts. So that is staff recommendation for the ordinance. I think that addresses the concerns voiced by the city commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Javier is also on the line.
Hey, Dan, so I, just real quick, once this process is done and if this gets approved and whatnot, they're not going to have to come to the commission every single time they have an event, correct?
No, sir. No, sir. So they would have a maximum capacity established by their application. And so if they exceed that and we started getting complaints, then we would go out there and confirm that. Then we would bring it back to city commission for consideration of revocation of the SUP, but only if they exceed the maximum capacity.
Right, because what are my concerns was that every time they had an event, they're going to have to go through the whole process and come to city commission. And, you know, I like the fact that you've set all the guidelines, that the in-house people, you know, do their administrative responsibilities and whatnot. And unless it gets out of hand or whatnot, then we really don't have to have oversight on it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, my big headache with this whole thing was the use of the word concert. And I think that's what you're getting at, Richard. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and so my, you know, my concern was that we were focusing on the food trucks and not the park. And so when I talked to Dan right after the meeting, I said, Dan, we really need to make this more like a restaurant and not make it so restrictive. So I think that's how we got here. And I see everything here, Dan. I mean, I agree with it one hundred percent of all of it.
So we're in a motion for approval, or?
Let's ask Rebecca to read the caption, please.
Okay. An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances by adding various provisions governing the location, use, existence, and operation of food truck parks as follows. Chapter one eleven zoning Article three, section one eleven dash sixty-two, establishing a category in the use chart Article six, section one eleven to one forty, adding off-street parking requirements Article twelve, section one eleven to one thirty-five, special use regulations and restrictions establishing other regulations in Article fifteen, section one eleven to four thirteen, special use permit process requiring a special use permit providing for application and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to get approved.
Second. And thank you, Dan, for looking into that and having the staff go on and doing that work, that extra, that extra work. I appreciate it very much.
Well, the staff appreciates all the input from the commission and helped guide all of these changes, so thank you so much.
Thank you for listening to us.
Always, sir, always.
Any other, any other, any other discussion? Good collaborative effort, the commission and the staff get this thing done and we slowed it down just a little bit, but we got it right, I think. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. And that was the second reading, so we're, that's the ordinance, that's final passage of the ordinance. Item five, a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general GR located at four oh seven West Harrison, bearing illegal description of lots eight through nine, block eighty-four, Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision. Applicant Nora Herrera Manriquez. So I asked the staff to go ahead and present this item.
Yes, Mayor, city commissioners, good evening. This is a proposed, this place has been a bar for many, many years. It was closed recently. It's known as El Cisne Bar on Harrison, between C and D streets, and Ms. Nora Herrera Manriquez would like to open it again in the near future. The zoning is general retail in all directions. This is the aerial photo showing the location of the building. It's in the downtown district. The downtown board approved it, and also the police department recommended approval. And that's what the building looks like from the outside. That's the site plan of the, well, the floor plan of the bar. Staff recommends approval of the SUP request following, subject to the following conditions. The SUP will be limited to one year, and the applicant will be required to apply for renewal to continue the operation of the establishment. Must obtain and maintain the proper state and TABC permits, provide video surveillance with at least thirty-day retention period, minimum of one licensed security guard during peak hours, which is a Thursday to Sunday from nine P M. to two A M. And comply with all the requirements from planning and building inspections, health, fire, and police departments. This went before the planning and zoning commission on February tenth. And no one spoke in opposition to the proposed SUP, and they unanimously recommended approval with a three to zero vote.
All right, this is the commission. Have any questions for the staff at this point?
I had a question. I'm trying to find it. I wanted to make sure I read something correctly. Javier, is there parking behind this building?
There is like dirt parking. I think it's more for the employees.
Okay, but I read somewhere there was, I forgot how many different slots that were included in the parking for that.
Yeah, I think it's more for like the employees to park there, not the customers.
Okay.
It's on the street or, you know, I guess against some walkings.
Okay. That's all I wanted. I wanted to get clarified on that question. Okay, thank you.
All right, let me go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Amanda, did anyone sign up for the public hearing?
No one signed up for the public hearing, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing and go to item B, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general retail GR located before Southwest Harrison, bearing illegal description of lots eight through nine, block eighty-four. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Nora Herrera Manriquez to allow a bar lounge in the general retail GR district located at four oh seven West Harrison Avenue, bearing a legal description of lots eight to nine, block eighty-four, Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision. Subject to one, the SUP would be limited to one year, and the applicant would be required to apply for renewal to continue the operation of the establishment. Two, obtain and maintain proper state and TABC permits. Three, provide video surveillance with at least a thirty-day retention period. Four, provide a minimum of one licensed security guard during peak hours, being Thursday to Sunday from nine P M. to two A M. And five, comply with the requirements administered by planning and development, building inspections, health, fire prevention, and police departments.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Item six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a storage building greater than one hundred and forty-four square feet in a single-family residence district located at fifty-two eighteen New York Road, bearing a legal description of lot five, block three. Appreciate it. It was Jerry Taylor Hatch.
Yes, Commissioner, this is a proposed twenty-by-twenty storage building proposed in the backyard of a residence along the north side of Garrett, close to Dilworth Road. This is normally processed administratively, but we received two letters in opposition to to the request, so that's why we had to schedule the public hearings. The zoning is a single-family residential to the east and west and to the north. This is the aerial photo showing the house, and then the proposed storage building will be in the backyard away from utility apartments. This is the house of the applicants. This is the site plan showing the house and the proposed location. And this is what the proposed storage building will look like. The intent is for the building to match the architecture of the house. Staff recommends approval of the SUP following, subject to the following conditions. The storage building must be used primarily for the use of storage of goods, not to, not to have any hazardous chemicals or dangerous materials. Cannot used for living space. No one is allowed to live there. And must comply with the requirements of planning, building inspections, fire prevention. Department must obtain permits. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on February tenth, and no one spoke in opposition to the proposed SUP. Like I mentioned before, we did get two letters in opposition, which are included in your packet, but they didn't call during the, during the public hearing to state their opposition. The planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval with a three to zero vote.
I'm getting on this subdivision, has anybody been denied a similar request? That's my first question. And my second question is, the ones that are in opposition, are they like the direct neighbors to this property or do they not state?
I believe this is the first one in this area that is bigger than one hundred and forty-four square feet, which is having to go through this process. The
But we've allowed similar structures, correct?
Yeah.
Maybe it's not as big?
Not as, yeah, not as big. The, the people that submitted the letters is the property to the north, which is a twenty acre, I think it's a twenty acre property. And the property is being sold apparently, so we got the letter from the current owner and the proposed buyer. And so they, they're making a claim that, that the building will lower the value of this property for the, I think there's a proposed
But if I'm not mistaken, what I saw that's being proposed is actually something that's been engineered and it's a, it's a nice structure. It's not a
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will be, it will be very nice. It's going to match the house. Also, the applicants stated during the planning and zoning commission meeting that they're going to have landscaping along the fence and along the sides. So once the landscaping is growing, you will not be able to see the storage building at all.
Okay, sure. That's all I got. Thank you.
Now, as I'm reading the letter, it says that there's already an existing pergola on the side, a twenty-by-twenty pergola?
Yes, they have a pergola.
And, but I don't see it here on the, on the drawing. So is it also screened? Or do they intend on screening that to help with the complaint?
They're planning to install landscaping all along the inside fence.
Okay.
Yeah, so once that landscaping takes off, you will not be able to see the building or the pergola.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And so Amanda, did anyone sign up for the public hearing?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. We'll go to item B. Consideration of possible action to approve an order on first reading for a special use permit of storage building greater than one hundred and forty-four square feet. And I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit issued to Jerry Taylor Hatch to allow a storage building in a residential family R one district located at five two one eight Garrett Road, bearing a legal description of lot five, block three, Remington subdivision. Two, one, the storage building being used primarily for the use of storage goods and provisions, not including hazardous chemicals or dangerous materials. Two, the storage building cannot be used as a living space. And three, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and development building inspections and fire prevention department.
Is there a motion to adopt eight ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Second, motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Raise your hand, please. Those opposed?
Opposed.
As habit, motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the second amendment to the interlocal agreement between the Lower River Valley Development Council and the City of Harlingen for the Federal Transit Administration, fifty-three oh seven, project of sidewalk improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This, this item is strictly regarding the timeframe required for this project's completion. The railroad is currently working to come in and add concrete planking at the crossing there on seventy-sixth Drive. So they were anticipated to come in this month and, and begin work. So we're hopeful to see them here sometime shortly. And upon completion of that, that will complete this project. So this item strictly is, is in regards to the timeframe for the project. We're just pushing the goalposts a little bit here. And I do need to point out that the executive summary does have a typo. It, it says on the last bullet there, August thirty-first, we're, we're moving this project to, to anticipated completion at December thirty-first of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing now, is there, is there a, a motion to authorize city manager to execute the second amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action to update the Harlingen Convention of Visitors name to the public as Visit Harlingen upon recommendation by the Harlingen CBB Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I would like to introduce you all to, I would like to rebrand the Convention of Visitors Bureau of Harlingen. On February fourth, the CBB held a regular meeting, and I presented to the board, changing the name of the Harlingen Convention is Visitors Bureau to Visit Harlingen. As you can see, we have already started using Visit Harlingen in a lot of our ads, and our domain name is visitharlingen texas dot com in addition to all our social media handles, our Visit Harlingen. This is a trend that has been happening with all of the CBBs in Texas and around the, around the United States to really, for it to be more of a call to action for visitors and community members alike. All of the board members voted in favor of this, and staff recommends approval of changing of the name. These are some other options, or some ideas of what other cities have done in Texas. And during the next board meeting, we would like, I would like to bring to the boards
I'm sorry, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
That one. So, so is that showing that Corpus and McAllen have the same, Houston have the same?
They all, all their names are Visit and then City. They all, I guess Corpus has the bird, McAllen also has a bird in it to signify birding. Houston also change is, essentially their logo is just towards Visit Houston, and they changed the backdrop to match whatever is happening. So this month, they might have something concerning St. Patrick's Day, let's, you know. Something concerning St. Patrick's Day, let's you know, per se, or Valentine's Day. But their real logo would just be the font used, the wording.
Yes, but so my question was, is is, if I'm understanding you correctly, this is kind of a trend that's everybody's kind of doing. Everybody's saying visit whatever, right, and we're just. Kind of piggybacking off of that?
I want to say piggybacking more of.
I mean, because is it is it working, is it is it a trend that's been like the last couple of years that you've seen this happening or?
Yes, Visit San Antonio is also another one, it, like I said, it's a call to action. I would have recommended Explore Harlingen, but that's already taken by a local blog here in Harlingen, so that.
Oh, yes, yes.
I.
Okay, I did, yeah, I just want to understand the them, but I understand, I appreciate it.
Okay.
And and is the B T X the heart part of their logo?
Brownsville, Texas, the heart, no, I think that was just during the month that.
Okay.
I got that logo, so like I said, it really is kind of the font and the structure of the logo, and then they changed the backdrop.
Got it.
Be able to kind of like capture audiences. So I would like to present some new. Some new artwork and logos and branding to the board during the month of March and. They're all very much on board with the changing of the name, especially because the C V B are currently, we do not. Actually book the convention center and our name seems to lead others to believe that we do. So, you know, people are are constantly saying, well, what are, you know, what's going on, and I don't necessarily have the books to that information. We do always market them and we always are encouraging people to book it, but I do not specifically do that. I think that this name change will clarify our role in the in the city.
Yeah.
I did want to show you guys something, you could probably hover your phone over this Q R code that you see on the screen right now. And you would be able to download our visitor guide. I I've already put out to see if we can get some of these little squares, like a picket sign in front of. Our chamber and so people, in case they did not necessarily want to be in contact with us, but wanted to get some information, they could hover over the Q R code. That's posted outside of our building and download our visitor guide. That is all the information.
All right, sounds good, anybody have any other questions? So is there is there a motion to. To update the name?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Cassandra, item nine, consideration of possible action to provide a grant amount of fifty thousand dollars to Loews and Fishes. To assist the financial expenses incurred for assistance provided to immigrants in Harlingen. Gabe?
Here, members of the commission, Loews and Fishes has been participating in a consortium of cities that have been expecting an influx of immigrants. C V P had thought they would start releasing on Friday, but today Loews and Fishes received fifty immigrants at the shelter. So this is coming at an opportune time for them. This grant would provide fifty thousand dollars to Loews and Fishes to use for personnel costs associated only with the the influx of immigrants into the shelter. They would also be able to use some of the funding for food, for housing, for transportation, P P E and COVID testing. The the grant would also provide an additional twenty-five thousand dollars at the city manager's discretion if he saw the need for additional funding. And this would go through the end of this year. If the need continued, we could always amend the the termination of the grant. The staff is recommending approval of the expenditure of the grant for fifty thousand dollars. If you have to answer any questions in the head.
Gabe, how much does the COVID testing cost?
Well, we were able to work with dignity, they're providing the the testing for the county. And they've agreed to do it while they have supplies at no cost to to Loews and Fishes.
Say that again?
Dignity, which is providing it for Cameron County, has agreed to do that for Loews and Fishes. And they've agreed to provide, to provide at no cost to them. They've obtained a grant for that, but should the grant run out, then they might have some expenses that they may have to use to for that, but for now, it's gonna be free.
Okay.
And and you and you're talking about the COVID, COVID testing?
Yes, sir, COVID testing. Of the immigrants only.
Now, and and this this money is gonna come from where?
General fund.
Okay, and 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 do they not have, get qualified to get government money or government assistance?
Not not for immigration issues, they've gotten money for homeless. And that's pretty much what they qualify for right now.
Okay, so so are are we are we doing anything for any of our citizens for free testing? That, have we put money aside and given out free testing for our 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 citizens that are that need the COVID testing?
We we've set up several test sites, Commissioner, those are at no cost. We also do homebound testing for those that are homebound at no cost, so the answer to that question is yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so so they could not go and 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 just get tested when we're testing people?
What what the problem with the immigrants commissioner is that they'll come in and they might leave in a day or two, much much quicker. So we have to have the rapid test done, and that's what dignity can do. Some of the tests that we're offering through our test site takes a few days to to get back. And so we need to have something that's quick.
Okay, but but didn't we just, didn't we just give them, didn't we just give those officials more money? Didn't they ask for?
That was for a financial hardship program for Harlingen residents only. To assist with with rent and mortgage income, overdue electric utility bills, water bills and gas bills.
Okay, so I understand that that the the director has resigned or gave his notice and maybe the board president resigned as well. Who's overseeing the the program right now?
Bill Ring is still there. He's gonna retire at the end of the year, but he's still there.
Okay, and the their board, did they did they replace the board member that resigned?
Commissioner, I have no knowledge about a board member resigning.
Okay. Okay.
Richard, my church this week in anticipation for this influx donated fifty blankets. So people in the community are helping now.
Yeah, my my real question wasn't about the COVID test, Richard, mine was more about the ability for us to stretch the dollar. I I didn't want a lot of this money to be used on the COVID test, I was hoping that somebody would step up and help with the testing. This this is mainly humanitarian, because they're gonna stay here overnight, they need.
Right, but but I would rather, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They need food, I mean, when you look at what's what's really here, it it's for the people, they're gonna help move them. Because they come in, the only reason they're here is because they have a ticket out of town, so they need someplace to stay. In anticipation of that ticket, because what Loews and Fishes is doing is they're bridging that gap, they come in and say, this is the phone number, who has my ticket? They're not buying.
And so, so so the the border patrol or whoever has brought them over, they they do not test them?
No, they're not gonna test them. They already said that to the group that they're not gonna be testing anybody.
See, and and I think that's their responsibility to do that.
I think that's really a federal, I I think we're just looking at this as what's going on in McAllen, the city of McAllen is has has come up and helped. Catholic charities there in McAllen, the same basic thing.
Right, I understand, but but I'm looking.
Right, and McAllen and Brownsville have a much larger.
Yeah.
Issue with this, we we. We don't have the same kind of influx, just because of our location and because their bus stations are larger. But Commissioner Lyle is correct, what's happening, what will be happening here is that they'll really just be passing through. And I think this, Loews and Fishes is providing this service really to the community to allow. These immigrants to, you know, not be on the street or at the bus station. Which I think is probably better, safer, more orderly to have them there, but they need. Loews and Fishes needs to have certain protections for their other residents, and that's why I think they've asked for the COVID testing.
May I, may I ask, if they're positive, what happens? And who picks up the tab or where do we take them from there?
That I don't know, Dave, do you know?
If they test positive, they'll be quarantined. But they they can't force them to stay somewhere in quarantine, they'll just have to notify wherever they're, if we know where they're going, that they're they tested positive.
So but we have no control where they go, or if they could just leave and they'd be positive and.
That's 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 true.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't, this really isn't sort of a, for us, it's not a, you know, we're not taking a position on this. On immigration, it's not, we're not getting involved in that issue, it's really just a practical issue of health and safety. And trying to provide some kind of an orderly transition, if they're in our community, then, you know, they're. And that's, that's a federal issue, that's a federal law enforcement issue that we don't really have any control over, but once they're here. And if they're gonna be spending the night, Loews and Fishes has offered to provide this service, which is really a positive thing, I believe, for the community.
So so we we couldn't open up the the testing to.
And McAllen, let me just add that, you know, really, we have not had to bear the brunt of the of the burden here. McAllen has spent literally millions of dollars over the course of a number of years dealing with this issue. Fortunately, we're not having to do that, but we need to do a little, we need to do something.
But but they they did get reimbursed, correct, in McAllen?
I don't think they got reimbursed for everything. They got, they may have gotten some money, but they didn't, they've been trying to get reimbursed for a long period of time.
So so I guess the the concern I have, sir, is is. An average citizen who who would like to get a COVID test cannot, doesn't have it readily available, could we not make it readily available that if a of a citizen wanted to go and. Get tested at the Loews and Fishes that they could? Because then we'd be providing, I mean, the issue I have is that somebody's come in and they're on their way, whatever, but but they get an immediate treatment. Where our own citizens may not be able to have that same luxury.
The one thing to consider, Commissioner, also is that this is just not COVID testing, this is providing a meal, providing shelter. Providing transportation from Loews and Fishes to the bus station, if they need to get.
And that I understand, yes, sir, I understand all that, but I'm I'm. The the access to the test. The the, I understand the humanitarian humanitarian part of it, of feeding them and clothing, that's that's Loews and Fishes. That's what they do, and and I and I really appreciate the work that they've done. But we're we're giving them access to a test, like I said, I always look at, well, we should be doing that for our citizens as well.
We we are.
Can I?
But not, but not every, not 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 every day, okay.
Gabe, let me ask the question this way, the testing we're not providing. The testing is coming by a third party, dignity, I think is what you said?
Yes, sir.
And and that's a grant to Loews and Fishes, like, we're giving them this grant for fifty thousand, dignity is also giving them a different grant.
They're gonna provide, they're gonna provide the personnel and the test conducted themselves, and then they'll give them the results.
Right, right, because I I know right now, if you need a test, you can you can go over to U T R G V or one of these other locations. They don't ask you for anything other than an insurance card, and if you don't have an insurance card. I mean, I think we've been providing, I I think the misconception, there's a misconception that there's a cost. If you want to go to C V S and you need one now, that's different, but if you and I need a test, we can just go down.
But but if you don't have insurance, can you get it?
If you don't have insurance, I mean, I I'm gonna tell you, a friend of mine had no insurance, called me up, very concerned. I said, don't do the rapid test, do this, the the P C, P C R test, they went down to the U T R G V side, or they went the one on Wilson Road, I can't remember which. They got tested, no no cost.
Okay.
All that, all they asked is, you you have a driver's license to identify who you are, that was it.
All right.
And so, I try to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
They're they're also limiting the amount of people that are being brought in, I was there this morning with Pastor Reagan at Loews and Fishes, so. You know, they're not, they're not swamping the whole place, they're limiting to fifty, so, you know, border patrol knows exactly how many they can bring. So where, he's limiting for for the border patrol and then also people locally, they need a place to stay, they can also, there's room for them too.
Yeah, we, I called last night because I had people looking for a place to stay, and Pastor Reagan said, if people are looking for a place in the from the cold, we have plenty of cots available. And so I I confer with Commissioner Bellar.
Commissioner, Commissioner OReilly, you you raise an important point, and I think it's important to reiterate. That Harlingen, that the city of Harlingen does sponsor. In one way or another, several different avenues for free testing for the for our citizens. And it's, and we do post that information on our website, we're still participating in the Brownsville project, is that right, Dan? So you can go, you can go to their their testing site, and even if you're not a Brownsville resident, if you're from Harlingen, and you don't, and and if. We we're we're picking up that that tab, we're also, remember, Steck is administering a special program. That we authorize for them to do, we're paying for those in-home tests. As Commissioner Lyle pointed out, U T R G V on Treasure Hills Boulevard are still doing their clinics twice, twice a week. And we're also, you don't have to, you don't have to pay for that, and then we're we're, we have these regular clinics and we announce those. Either that the National Guard does or that the county and the city do at Wilson. So there are several now, at least four different avenues for our citizens to get a test. And I think it's real important for us to be publicizing that information more. Because, you know, we want people to know that they have access. If they can't get it through their physician or a local clinic or their doctor, or they don't have a doctor, they need to, they need to know that these other avenues. For testing are available to them, and so I'm glad that you raised this.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right. Let's see, I guess we still need a, we need a motion.
Next, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank you. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal election agreement. Between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District to share polling places. Equipment and election personnel for Election Day, May first, twenty twenty-one, and share city hall as a joint polling place. For early voting by personal appearance, April nineteenth through April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, from eight A M to five P M. With the exception of two days from eight A M to eight P M. Amanda?
Mayor, this is a standard contract that we've done in the past for the school. And it's basically for what you read, you know, just to share the polling places, the equipment and personnel for Election Day. And for early voting, and as you stated, early voting is from April the nineteenth through the twenty-seventh. From eight A M to five P M, with the exception of two days from eight to eight A M to eight, eight P M. And as far as the polling places for our, for our part, Mayor. Is for District Three, Treasure Hills Elementary, for District Four, Bowie Elementary, Jefferson Elementary School. And then for District Five, it's Stewart Place Elementary and Mylum School. And of course, the school does have a lot more polling places, but since we're having only. Three districts on the ballot, those are the corresponding polling places for us. And staff recommends approval.
And and the change on forty-three is because forty-three, it it covers more territories, is that not correct, besides just a portion of my district?
Well, actually, we, precinct forty-three is, will not be on Stewart Place, it's only a little part. And because the school recommends to open a Mylum school, that's why the city, well, in order to work together, you know, we do the same thing.
Yeah, that's that's what I wanted to note, because the school is having their 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 election, and they they encompass the entire forty-three, is that not correct?
Yes, yes, only encompass a little part of.
Correct. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand please.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution, amending resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh seven. Calling and ordering the city of Harlingen May first, twenty twenty-one general election. Calling and ordering the city of Harlingen May first, twenty twenty-one general election to delete precinct number forty-three. From Stewart Place Elementary School polling place, Amanda?
Uh, mayor, um, at the last city commission meeting, the city commission of February the third. The city commission approved the resolution, um, two thousand, twenty twenty-one oh seven. Uh, calling the election, um, the election. However, on, it was my oversight that, um, forty-three was mentioned twice in, um, in Stewart Place and. Um, Mylum, so this proposed, uh, resolution is to amend resolution. Twenty twenty-one oh seven to, um, to remove precinct forty-three from Stewart Place. And assign forty-three to Mylum Elementary. And that will give any confusion as far as voters, you know, we don't want. Voters to be going to Stewart Place and then, uh, voters going to Mylum, because there could be, um. You know, we don't want double voting or anything like that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries, alright, Amanda, thank you for keeping it straight on our, our elections and. Uh, having a joint election. But, board appointments, are there any, item twelve, are there any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
I have none.
Okay, hearing, hearing none, I don't believe there's any, uh, there are no other items on the agenda. Again, we ask everyone to, uh, consider going to the shelter, uh, uh, or rather, the warming center. Uh, tonight, or over the course of the next couple of days. Uh, and, and tell our residents also, we need to continue our best practices, uh, even as we're. Uh, administering vaccines, encourage our residents to get vaccinated when they have an opportunity to do so. And we'll do our best to get as much vaccine out to the public as quickly as we can, as it becomes available. And hopefully the supplies will in- increase over time, so thank you, everybody, and have a great evening, good night, stay safe, stay warm.